I was in the middle of typing your text message. They canceled the closed session tonight, so they don't have to say anything. Yeah, the attorney didn't want us to have it. He doesn't think it's something we can talk about in something that opens up. And Mr. Cobb didn't want to talk about it in an open address. Yeah. Now, how can I help you? Yeah, if you want to log on and send, I think Mr. Cobb also wanted you there to talk about maybe some safety issues that can pop up if they were decided to close streets or move. I know. He asked that you be there for this meeting. You probably did. It might be like, yeah, it might be like last time, but this time we're just going to talk about the outdoor dining and whatever other roles must be put in place. Yeah. Hopefully, it won't be long, especially since we don't have a closed. All right. Thanks, Chief. Right. Bye-bye.
Hi, Greg. Hi, Greg. Nope, not yet.
Hello, Yancy.
How are you?
I'm okay. How are you?
I'm okay. Going insane, but okay. I've been trying to call you all day just to say hi and how are you doing?
Did you, did you call me?
No, no, I meant to try to get to call you.
Okay.
Hi, Jim.
Good evening, Jim.
Still logging on. So they canceled the closed session for tonight, so we don't have to worry about that.
Okay. Do you know what it was supposed to be?
Um, we were going to talk about some of the safety issues for the two protests on Saturday. But Bill didn't feel it was, it was appropriate. All right. Let's call.
Well, I'm going to mute myself.
Okay. Hi, Wayne.
Hello there.
How's it going?
Going well. You?
Okay, going is crazy busy, but you know how it is.
Uh, any, any final, final information on voting deadlines in whatever we're doing?
What I sent you, that was pretty much it.
That's it? Okay.
Yeah, I need to put together a statement that incorporates the voting locations. And I want to wait a little bit to see what kind of safety precautions there are, if, you know, hand sanitizers, masks. I haven't heard anything yet, so I'm just going to wait a little bit on that. But definitely voter, last day to register to vote is June 16th. And I will be having late night voter registration that day. I was debating back and forth, and I decided today that I'm going to do that.
Sounds good. Okay.
Hopefully, this will be quick. We're not having a closed session anymore.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello, Yancy. Could you hear me?
Yeah, Jim, I can hear you.
So was the meet, did you say the meeting was canceled?
No, the closed session.
Okay.
Lucky, Jim.
Yeah. Okay.
Hello? Um, two days ago, two days ago, yes. I think so. Always forward it to you. I don't even remember this. I'm just going to put this in the body of an email.
Hello.
Hey, Gordon, how are you?
Oh, it's your bill.
Hey, Bill.
Fine. How are you doing?
How are you? Hey, everybody. How are you?
Doing well.
Good.
Evening, Bill.
Hi, everybody. How are you?
How are you?
I feel like we're in cheers, like, you know, Bill's like Norm, you know?
Yeah.
Bonsoir, Franz. Comment allez-vous?
Hi, everybody. Hey, Gordon. Hey, Franz. Hey, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor. How are you doing? Hang in there, Bill. Good.
Hey, Franz.
Got lots of support. Thanks largely to you guys, so.
Oh, that was the email I sent you today. Yeah, the email I sent this afternoon. But the link information, I just resent that to you.
Hey, everyone.
I see. I see, but you're muted for some reason.
Jim, what's going on, man?
Not much.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to go.
What's it going to be like after the pandemic? Are we going to like call each other three o'clock every day?
Everybody's here, right? You got everybody?
No.
I think everyone's here. Everyone's here.
Okay. We'll get started.
Okay.
We'll just start.
Right, I'm going to hang up.
Mr. Yancy, where's the, the closed Zoom number?
Oh, we're closed today. We, that changed. The closed got canceled.
I thought the whole purpose was closed.
No, this is an open discussion.
Oh, okay. Oh, yes, that explains that.
Yeah.
Let's get started. A fathers council special meeting of June 4th, 2020 to order at 7:02. Will everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag.
States of America. Nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty.
Invisible. And justice for all. City clerk, please read the open public's meeting act.
The special meeting was called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJS-A, colon four dash six at seek and in consideration of executive order number 103 issued by Governor Murphy on March 9th, 2020, declaring a state of emergency and a public health emergency in the state of New Jersey. The city of Englewood does hereby notify the public that to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, while ensuring the continued functioning of government, the city council special meeting will be held telephonically and virtually only via Zoom. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so by joining the Zoom meeting at, check the link on our website, and/or calling 929-205-6099, followed by passcode 899-2397-4180. Individuals calling into this number will be fully, will be able to fully participate in the meeting, including providing public comment. A non-public dial-in number will be used for closed session. Council reserves the right to discuss and act upon such public business as may be brought up for consideration to the extent that consideration of such public business is not known at this time and reserves the right to go into closed session during this meeting. Formal action may or may not be taken. Proper notice has been given. The municipal clerk is directed to a statement in the minutes of this meeting.
Will you, the city clerk, please do the roll call?
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Here.
Councilwoman Rosenberg? Councilwoman Rosenberg? Oh, she's giving a thumbs up. Okay. Council President Cobb?
Yeah.
Also present is Mayor Michael Wilds and City Attorney Bill Bailey.
Items for discussion of policies and procedures related to assisting with the reopening of the business district.
How do you want to, how do you want to?
We want to open up to the public.
Oh, you want me to just?
Yep.
Give you some ideas on what some of the, based on the governor's executive order?
Yes, based on what we can do and what we cannot do, if you could start there, please.
So, as we all know, the governor issued an executive order allowing for the reopening of a good chunk of businesses, starting on June 15th. On June 15th, he's allowing outdoor dining, as well as the reopening of non-essential retail businesses, both with conditions and restrictions. The following week will be the reopening of the salons. So what we're, I'm looking, requesting from the council is to just look at some of our current ordinances and some of our policies and see how we can amend and tweak them to help out with, with the businesses so that they can expand their outdoor dining and just help out with a couple of other things. The state does require certain things have resolutions attached to them. So our next council meeting is Tuesday. So I was hoping if, if everyone's in agreement, we can have those resolutions on Tuesday's agenda for approval by the council so that they can be in place for the reopening on the 15th. So, all right.
Let's be clear, this, this is strictly about downtown and whatever ideas we have in terms of helping the merchants down there. But I've asked Chief Sufferin, Jim Fedorko, and I've asked Franz Volsi. I don't know if all these gentlemen are on the line at the current moment, but
They're here.
Any changes the Health Department has to opine on, as well as the safety from the chief, and Franz will guide us in anything that we do structurally to downtown. So, you know, it's important that we understand what it is and that I hope nobody in this governing body has promised anybody anything that we're going to do other than assess everything individually on its own merits, and then we will move forward accordingly.
Mr. Cobb, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you to everybody who's assembled. I want to also thank our police chief and our health director for leading and making our job a hell of a lot easier. Setting policy by the governing body, the mayor and the council, has a lot to do with being effective in the way the end result is. No promises have been made, but we have an aging constituency and community, and we need to be sensitive to not only the governor and health and police protocols, but to help regenerate the businesses. And I want to thank Carol Rousher from the Chamber of Commerce for putting many of us before some very important content and webinars so we can get up to speed and use this time wisely. And I think it wise that this meeting was put forward and that there's some business proprietors here. Look, nobody wants to stop streets. Nobody wants to mark streets every six feet with a yellow mark. But our colleague communities, who have such great restaurant inventory, are doing that. They not only maintain the health of their community, but the health of their businesses. And we have to be sensitive. On Palisade Avenue, do we want to go up one way and down the other way? People aren't listening and shop right. How do we expect them to walk on the street properly? And if we can't have people dining on our sidewalks because they're too close to pedestrians, then the question is, do we take it to the streets? And if we take it to the streets, what kind of overtime and costs are we going to have when the city doesn't have revenue coming in because of COVID-19 and our ton of staggered manpower? If you take a restaurant like Sophia, that is a staple in our community. And I know it's awkward and difficult to think how they're going to cater on the platform where we raised a pride flag last year, but it is literally across the street. They have wonderful parking, and they will insure us. Those are not promises that are being made, but those are the kinds of efforts that we have to do to see whether or not we have an inventory of resource that would allow some of our proprietors to use it. They'll clean it and they'll keep it properly, and they'll have to work out the mechanics with the chief, with the Health Department, and so forth, Mr. Cobb. So I believe ultimately, we have to work, of course, within the protocols of governance, but we also have to be careful of common sense, because a lot of the proprietors are hurting. They're always there for us when it's casual. We need to be there in stride. And I really want to thank our assemblyman also, who joins us today, who thought of how to make just a little more cheer for people by having alcoholic beverages on a takeout basis. We have to think out of the box. And again, I tip my hat to this council for working completely together to help all the proprietors and residents. Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Anybody else have any questions, concerns, anybody else participating tonight?
I have a question. I'd like to get Yancy and Bill to take us down the list of the things that we have to do by way of resolution. I know that proprietors have to, you know, get licensed for, you know, I guess the, for the period of time until, until November, when the license would normally expire. But just what is it that we need to do? Just set the boundaries for what we need to do and, and, you know, to the extent you know what's been asked, being asked of us to be in place by, by Tuesday.
Bill, I know, do you want to see this? Because I know we talked a little bit beforehand.
Yeah, sure. Just in response to Councilman Habers. Well, we would obviously have to comply with the executive order. The fact that there's an executive in place, I believe, the resolution has to. The absence of.
Hey, Bill, we got a bad connection. You're breaking up.
Okay, hang on a second.
Hey, Bill, we got a bad connection. You're breaking up.
Okay, hang on a second. You guys can move that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So just to go back from saying, given the executive order, I believe it can be done by resolution. In the absence of an executive order, we would have to do ordinance amendments to our existing ordinances, but the executive order can expedite things and simplify the process, as other municipalities have done in terms of the resolution. Any such resolution permitting, whether it's the serving of alcohol or outside dining, has to obviously be within the confines of executive order 150, which include tables would have to be six feet apart. I believe it provides that you can't have parties larger than eight. People are only allowed to go into the establishment for the purpose of using the restroom, but then have to wear a mask at that time. The restaurants have to, you know, appropriately mark six-foot distances. If there is food being served outside, you can't smoke within the area where the food's being served. And there has been a relaxation in terms of liquor licenses, in terms of the ability to sell outdoors, mixed drinks, things of that nature. And it would have to, you know, comply with your typical health code prop, you know, requirements in terms of, you know, how you process and serve food and the things that are done in the ordinary course. It does permit on publicly owned property, parks, parking lots, sidewalks, you know, as long as you've got adequate space there and it's not interfering with people's ingress and egress. If you have a very narrow sidewalk, that's going to be problematic. And it would be incumbent upon the proprietor to establish that they will be able to comply with all of these requirements. Other things on the proprietor is they have to provide regularly scheduled breaks for employees to wash their hands and things like that. They have to provide sanitizers. Again, people need to wear masks if they're entering the establishment. And the distancing still applies. It just gives flexibility to permit them to utilize public property to operate their establishment.
Bill?
So, yes.
I have two questions. One, does, do we have to do a resolution for each establishment that wants dining outside?
Uh, no.
You just do one blanket, one blanket resolution for the whole?
Yeah, but, but, right, but they're going to have to apply to the city and demonstrate how they're going to comply with it in order to then be authorized to operate
Okay, so.
outside of the typical confines.
Right, so the other question is, the mayor mentioned Sophia's and using the library's property, city property. I think that's a nonstarter. I don't know if they could use our property.
Under the executive order, the public property, yes, public property, it has to be with the permission of the city.
Yeah.
The, you know, has to be authorized by the governing body, but they can utilize public portions.
So.
And it's got to be established that they meet the requirements of the executive order and.
Right, but let me ask you something. Somebody falls on that property. Who's liable?
They make them file indemnity for them.
Well, they have to have a certificate.
I'm asking Bill the question. Either Bill or Yancy can answer it. I just want to know who's liable.
Typically, it requires the proprietor to name the city of Englewood as an additional insured in the event that that happened. But if that does happen, as is normal, the person will likely sue the establishment and the owner of the property, which in this case would be the city. And, you know, this is done in conjunction with the city's joint insurance fund, who have provided us with some information and guidelines in terms of that type of thing.
Is, is, is.
But one requirement should be that the city be named as an additional, excuse me, additional insured and indemnified and held harmless by the proprietor if it is an incident on the property or an injury.
So, and what about restaurants who are going across a roadway or something like that? What, what does that mean? Is there a problem with that? That, you know, if they're on one side of the street and the location or whatever is on the other side?
As long as it doesn't pose a safety concern. You know, if it's safe and not a heavily trafficked area where you've got food servers, you know, running across a heavily traveled street, that's one thing. But, you know, that would have to be done in conjunction with the police department in traffic and stuff to make sure it's, it can be done in a safe manner.
Well, you know, I'm just saying, you know, it's Engel Street, it's Dean Street, and Palisade Avenue. Those are, you know, those are the key streets.
Mr. Cobb, may I add that we actually reached out to our, our joint insurance fund and asked them what kind of liability would they cover the city for, for additional coverages if we were to allow this? And they were not in any way, shape, or form in favor of allowing something where waiters run across the street to serve food. If it was next door, if it was close by maybe, but to run across the street with food running up and downstairs, and especially busy streets like that, they, they were strongly not in favor of providing us with additional liability for something like that. I don't know if the chief or Jim want to weigh in. I saw Jim shaking his head no a little while ago.
The, the chief or Jim, feel free if they want to weigh in on this.
Jim, did you want to? I saw you waving your head, shaking your head no.
Chief Sufferin and I, we both, uh, chief had mentioned that earlier, and I think that's a very bad idea for public safety. Having a restaurant going across the street to serve food, especially across Grand, excuse me, that's not Grand there, it's Engle. And North Dean. No way. That's, that's, that's a bad thing waiting to happen. If, if anything, we should approve right next to the restaurant on the sidewalk. I'm in favor of that, because I don't see that an issue with food safety. Our, our goal at the Health Department is to make sure people don't get sick from eating the food. And if you have a restaurant out front, just like Blue Moon, that's a very safe environment. And I am in favor of expanding those areas outside of the restaurant. Carol Rousher and I spoke a little bit. She has a couple interesting ideas about going into the back parking lots. And I like those ideas much, much better than crossing a street over to Veterans Park for Bartolomeo or any of those restaurants. That's a, that's bad. That's not a good idea. I'm not in favor of that. I'm in favor of restaurants. I'm in favor of restaurants out front. I think that's. And I think in the beginning, there'll be difficulties with meeting those requirements set by Governor Murphy. But after three days, I think it's all going to be ironed out and, and we're going to have it running like a, like a song.
Hi, my name is Ivan. I'm a resident.
Wait a minute. Hold on, hold on one second. Let, let, we'll open it up to the public session. We have not.
All right.
You'll get your turn. Thank you. We haven't opened it up to the, to the public for public comment.
I think the chief would like to, I think the chief also had to come.
Yeah, I'd like to say something else.
Good evening, everybody. I, I, I agree. And like Jim said, we had had previous conversation relative to that. And I have an extreme concern about people trying to traverse, especially Angle Street and Dean Street that are heavily populated with vehicles trying to get across there, both patrons and employees. And if you're going to be serving food service there, obviously it's going to be in a tray of some type. The employee will be carrying a tray across the roadway, may not have the full field of vision necessary to cross the street or the, or the agility and mobility. Again, on a good day, it's difficult to traverse those, those roadways as a pedestrian. And then, you know, carrying food or other items could be an issue.
So, okay.
Yep.
Just, just as, just as an idea, you know, for temporary, what if, what would be the thought process? I don't know if the restaurants would even want this or work, but just as a suggestion, what if they were allowed to, let's say, set up tables across the street, but it would only be take out, you know, take out, you know, so this way they, you know, you'd be like where the curbside pickup or regular takeout. Then they'd have the ability to sit outside, you know, at those tables for the restaurant. So there would be no waiters involved, no back and forth, but a one-time kind of curbside pickup. And then they can go and sit across the street and open up whatever they have and eat there in that capacity. Would that, would that be something as a, as a middle ground potentially?
It sounds like you're talking, it's like a picnic table.
Yeah.
You're setting up picnic tables.
Does he need to feature those restaurants?
I don't think that we should designate anything for a particular restaurant. If you're going to set up picnic tables, just set up picnic tables and, and be done with it. Because then if you're saying, oh, this is for Sophia Restaurant, but it's not for, you know, another restaurant on that street. It doesn't make sense. And I don't know.
But Jim, what I'm saying is we wouldn't be putting out tables or chairs if, let's say, Sophia wants to.
Sophia would be putting them up.
They would put out chairs, they would put out tables, you know, and then people, you know, and we can, you know, and if there are other restaurants, we can give you up the space so each restaurant has equal access. But, but the concept, I guess, that, you know, that you're talking about is if Sophia set up whatever, whatever amount of tables there and people wanted to be able to, you know, patronize the, the establishment, go there, order, pick up curbside and then just cross the street and eat, you know, in that kind of format with no traversing back and forth and nothing like that, that might, maybe that's a middle ground.
That's an, that's an interesting concept. I understand. And what, yeah, you know, that's interesting. If you guys want to decide on that, okay. But I feel like if you do that, it's, you know, a, one step closer to more people traversing that street, then next thing you know, hey, I, I would need another martini. And they're going to go across the street. But yeah, I guess in theory, I guess you set, have them set up some tables. It's a slippery slope though. And so I, I'm more in favor of just doing it. Let's just try it right in front of the restaurant first. Let's just try it like that first. And then in the back parking lots, places where you don't have to cross the street, that's what I'm in favor of.
Like the Burger Street lot, Jim?
Let's, let's try that first.
I think Bill was trying to chime in, barely. Bill, can you repeat that? You didn't hear you.
But Jim, like for example, the Bergen Street parking lot. Would that be something, it would seem safer to me just because you don't have to cross the street to get there.
Right, you don't have to.
You're, you're at.
I'm okay with that idea.
Right. So it's kind of self-contained as opposed to, like you said, traversing Dean, Angle, Palisades. Yeah, okay.
And, and one more thing, I'm not in favor of blocking off parking spots. And the reason, because I know some, somebody is going to think, oh, there's a parking spot and hurry up and pull in there. And then there's a table full of people. Like, okay, so what? You put up a, a little chain or cone, they're going to run that right over and they're going to run somebody's over. And I, I think putting it in the street is a bad idea unless you block off the entire street. I, I think you guys see that. The sidewalk is, is the way I would go with it.
Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
I have a question. So in term, in, in terms of the restaurant employees and the servers, are there new protocols that they follow for their own safety and therefore the safety of the people who will, the patrons of the restaurant?
And if. Yes, you know, they have to wear masks. They have to, it doesn't say the exact amount of times, but more frequent hand washing, cleaning, you know, encouraging digital menus, but constantly cleaning paper or plastic menus that are handed around. Oh, yeah, there are a lot of requirements on restaurant and the employees to be sanitized as possible.
Bill, do you know if there are testing requirements? I, because I think for hair salons, I read, I don't know if it was true, that those folks have to get tested every two weeks. Is there anything like that for restaurant employees?
Not specifically for testing. There is though, if you feel like you have symptoms or not feeling well, do not come to work. It doesn't hard and fast require them to be tested.
I, I think, Bill, I saw today with the press conference that it's also owners or the managers of the restaurants also have to run down a list of symptoms with them and ensure that they're not sick.
Right, that. And also if someone does get sick and have it, there's talk of an obligation on them to provide from a tracing standpoint, who they may have been in contact with that had it.
Okay, and.
That's kind of after the fact though, you know.
Yeah, yeah, understood. In terms of the distancing, the six feet and all of that, is it going to fall to the Health Department to make sure restaurants are following all of those protocols? And if that's the case, Jim, you have enough resources to handle that?
Jim, you're on mute.
That's a good point. I, I think in the beginning that we're going to be very busy. And I, I, you know, I think generally restaurants, if you look, they're going to want to do the right thing. And those restaurants that, that are doing the right thing, people will go to them more often than those who don't. And the work, and I believe people do a lot of the self policing. So like I said, at first, it's going to be a bumpy road. But after a few days, it's going to get better.
Who do you think is, who, who do you think's in the best position to educate the restaurant owners in terms of the executive order so they know what to comply with? And so we don't have, we, we have to ensure that they've read it, they understand what it means. Because we're going to manage that expectation. If they're not going to follow that, they're not going to be allowed to do that.
Correct.
Is that your, is that your team that would be doing that, that educational part or whatever?
Well, also, we have the help of Carol Rousher. So Carol and I spoke a little bit today. And I like her idea that the Health Department is going to send out a, what was the word? An application or a permit. There's no fee involved in this, but it's a, a document that has the, the executive order, what they need to do, and then they sign it. And then we, we issue that and then we're going to go over it with them. Carol already is helping out these restaurants to get them in shape. And then there are some restaurants who aren't going to do it. They already said this is too much. And their facilities just aren't geared for outdoor dining. So it's not going to be all 300 and some odd food establishments that will be applying for this permit. It'll just be, you know, I, I consider a fewer. And then maybe after a few days, other restaurants may jump in and say, hey, I, I think we could do this too. So that's my, my feeling. Did I answer your question, Councilman Cobb?
Yes, yes.
So that's will be the document. We'll send it out, they sign it, we go over it with them. And we'll work with them to get it set up straight. And then, of course, we're going to get our complaints. We see that all, I mean, you saw, you saw that with ShopRite. And so, and, and then I could ask Joe Sorbanelli to help out with the policing aspect of it. He, he did a fine job with, with other parts of the pandemic, so I would ask him for his help.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
I just don't know if Chief Saffron had anything to add on the, the running across the street aspect of things.
No, I, I mean, I, I addressed that, you know, again, it's a potential hazard on, on Dean and Angle Street specifically. Again, we, we've had our share of pedestrian accidents on, on both roadways. And again, it, it's not conducive to that type of environment. So that would be my, my only sticking point.
Mr. Cobb, I just wanted to, Mr. Hamer had asked earlier too about what, what it is that we're specifically asking the council to be approving on Tuesday. So we already do have an outdoor dining ordinance established by the city. It is an annual fee that restaurants that want to have outdoor dining have to follow. We do have parameters in place for it. So many feet away from the curb, how many tables and chairs you could fit, obviously with the governor's executive orders, that capacity is going to be limited. So what we're, we're looking to do is, is what I'm asking, the council can maybe consider waiving the annual $150 fee in the resolution for one thing. And two, to maybe expand limitations of their outdoor dining. So instead of, I, I think they have to be so many feet away from the curb. I, I think for safety reasons, I believe it's six feet. That has to be established for, also for pedestrians to walk and for them to have safety away from the cars that park right there. But I, I think the, the thought process is maybe if there's a retail establishment next door that's not doing outdoor dining, if they want to expand to that, if they get an agreement with that property owner and landlord, if the council can also allow that expansion in the resolution to allow them to do that. The suggestion was to use the Bergen lot for outdoor dining to just, I guess, on a temporary basis prohibit parking there and, and close it off just for dining purposes for the restaurants that are in that vicinity. If that's the council's wish, we would need a resolution to prohibit the parking and to establish that as, as an outdoor dining facility. In addition to that, if any of these locations have a liquor license, if they're going to expand, our restaurants that have liquor licenses already have an extension of premises permit. But if they're going to extend beyond what they've already established, then they need to do another, an extension of their extension in a way. That has to be done through the state. But if they're going to be using city property for the extension, the council has to allow it by resolution. So all of these need to be established. If they're going to extend onto a neighbor's property, then that's going to require a copy of some type of agreement between them and that other property owner. So there's a lot of little details that need to get worked out. But I, I, I would like to know what it is that the council, what, what, what you would like to do? How far do you want to expand this and how, what can we do that can be done safely for everybody and also to help everybody?
Yancy?
Yes.
Councilwoman President? So I'm in favor of expanding outside, obviously, as much as we can. My concern is if we have, you know, tables all the way to six feet from the curb, where are people walking? If they want to walk up and down Palisade Avenue?
There's already a walkway for them to walk in between these places. So that's your six.
But not walk and be six feet from a table, is there? Because then they'll be in the street.
I, I'd have to look at that ordinance again, but I believe right now the ordinance is to establish a walkway of six feet to allow people the ability to walk.
Okay.
That, that is, that is correct. However, I would, I would say you're right because the people are going to definitely have to walk past the table. But again, I would say that is a low risk because it's just in passing. You're not sitting, unless you're standing, going to stand there and start talking to the people at the table. I, I would consider this a low risk activity for, for spreading the virus. So that, that's my opinion on, on that, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Additionally, for, for the extension of the liquor licenses and the extension of the outdoor dining, we do also allow BYOB, but it's only for restaurants that have a waitstaff. So for example, if you were to go to, I'll use a pizzeria, you, you walk into a pizzeria, you, you order food. They give you the food, you go sit down at your table. You don't have waiters and waitresses coming to you, giving you foods. And if they don't have a liquor license, they're allowed to do, they're not allowed to have a BYOB. Versus restaurants that actually have waiters and waitresses that come take your order, they're allowed to be BYOB. Though I would ask also if that's your wish to incorporate that into anything. So that would also be for the outdoor dining is the BYOB.
And that's for restaurants that do not have a liquor license.
For people who don't have a liquor license, they are allowed to have BYOB as long as they have waiters and waitresses serving food. That's in the ordinance.
Mr. Cobb? Are you, is that answering your questions?
It is. I just wanted to find out if Mr. Bailey had anything to add to that? Or, because I do have a, a suggestion that I want the council to consider. So, Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I would just like to, to Yancy's point about the BYOBs. For example, you know, a convenience store might sell chips and burritos that you can stick in a microwave or something. They're not permitted to have people do that and then sit there and have a beer or anything. So it wouldn't extend to them. But as Yancy said, just to establishments that have waiter service currently. So it's not just going to a convenience store, for example, and, you know, people bringing alcoholic beverages in and sitting on a sidewalk in front. But other than that, that's all accurate, what Yancy had indicated.
Oh, no, I wasn't checking on our accuracy. I just wanted to see if you had anything additional you wanted to add.
Oh, yeah, no, no. Oh, no, sir. Nope.
All right.
Mr. Cobb, this is Greg. If I can just raise one suggestion.
Yes.
In the event the council is giving consideration to the concept of takeout and taking it to tables that may be located off-site, there has to be some consideration given to the question of sanitizing those tables. And in the event the council goes in that direction, the Health Department ought to be providing some appropriate language and regulation for those restaurants that would be providing the tables that would indicate a standard of sanitation so that you're not potentially exposing somebody as the result of the table not being taken care of as one would find in a picnic table arrangement. That was all I wanted to mention.
Thank you.
Mr. Cobb, why can't we use that standard of care? And I think Greg, that's, that's, you know, that's a wonderful term. And push the, push the line a little bit. I, I appreciate the chief and the health director's concern for safety. But if a proprietor were to pay for an officer who can manage traffic, if they were to come up with accommodations where food would be boxed and carried over. where food would be boxed and carried over and it would be done with somebody watching the waiter. If, you know, in other words, I don't share the same confidence in Palisade Avenue that in front of Blue Moon and Starbucks, there's enough space if they expand for pedestrians to go up and down in the same direct in in opposite directions and for patrons to eat comfortably, even though it's in open air and everything. I'm just wondering if there is a way for us to set up a standard of care in such a way that if a proprietor says, look, I'm gonna be hiring an off-duty officer and he's going to help every single way to cross on every single occasion, and I will sanitize uh the tables that are there, I will indemnify uh the city of Englewood for the use of its parking spaces, and I will make sure that I'm there. You know, I'm thinking out of the box, Sophia is gonna have people dining in front of an abortion clinic next door to them?
No.
When when there's a facility literally across the street that's empty and they can, you know, I'm not scared of of somebody, God forbid, falling and and whatever it is, the city will be indemnified properly. That's why we have lawyers, that's why we have agreements. Um, and the city's not gonna be responsible for that um ultimately, even if we are a defendant in a lawsuit. I I just think we gotta think outside of the box and push it a little more, but safely.
Right. Michael, I just want to say, Eddie, I've already talked to you, and we're looking at Verizon as using.
Hold on one second. Go ahead.
Okay, um, you know, one of the things I've, yes.
Hold on one second.
Yeah.
Councilman Hamer?
Um, go, I is, have we moved to public session already?
No, we have not.
No.
Okay, just want to make sure. The uh, the item that I wanted to bring up for consideration is uh the Sid has is is entertaining a uh a notion to to uh expand dining on Palisade Avenue. And uh, you'll use, you know, basically close off the parking on Palisade Avenue. Uh, still allowing for uh vehicular traffic, but to uh close off parking, you know, with whatever safe and necessary uh closures we'd have to use at the head of the street and all along the street. But uh we're in get, you know, we're discussing engaging a a planner, and we'll have a concept information for the uh council to review on Tuesday if we move forward with it, and I think we will. Everyone seems to be uh positively you know, in in favor of uh moving in that direction. But it essentially would uh close off, you know, the parking and allow for expansion of the space that that uh restaurants currently have. And in addition to those agreements that uh might be reached with other, you know, our next-door, next-door neighbors who aren't restaurants, uh it it just gives, you know, the um restaurant business in town an opportunity to to, you know, try to make a difference in in this tough environment. So if if there's uh any interest, you know, I I'm certainly uh going to have the uh, you know, Sid move forward with uh getting the, getting the the concept so that we can take a look at them on Tuesday. And uh if if there's uh, you know, a positive feeling about it, you know, we'll be able to to move forward, and this would be paid for by the Sid, but uh it certainly would give the restaurants a boost or an ability to to get a boost.
Mr. Cobb, ma'am?
Yes.
Um, I I appreciate that that the Sid is looking into that. My main concern is, and as I began at the beginning of of um meeting, i- it's not just the outdoor dining restaurants that are opening um beginning the fifteenth, it's also a- and the governor hit us, blindsided us with also the ability to, uh, for all the non-essential retails to also open up on the same day. And a week later, you're gonna have all your salons opening up. So yes, we want to help all of the restaurants in town, but my concern is now that you're going to hinder those other types of businesses from from having a productive business because now their patrons are gonna want to come and they're not gonna find a place to park. Uh, no one's gonna want to park two blocks away from whatever store or boutique that they normally shop at. Um I I think there's a balance there that needs to be met. Um, I am majorly concerned about safety issues. We did have a car going down the sidewalk just last year. Um, I I I I'm worried about anyone just, you know, veering the right way, not being distracted. You know, I I and those are my concerns, really huge concerns about having traffic so close vehi- vehicular traffic moving so close to people sitting in the street without a barrier there for them. At least the cars now are some kind of barrier and and there's something also, like I said, for the other types of business because you have.
Absolutely, absolutely. If if you may, if you would, uh, the answer to that is, you know, it's not all solved. But, you know, the uh thought is that the uh large planters, you know, and other ballers could be put in place to uh create a barrier to uh and and again, it would not be right up to the edge of the edge of the uh sidewalk or extended sidewalk. Uh, and it's a temporary arrangement, but this is, you know, just some, as uh Mr. Wild said, uh, out of the box thinking, just to, you know, give, give us a a shot at it making a difference. Or give them a shot at making a difference.
I I think you might get the complaints from the other guys who are gonna complain that there's no parking for their patrons.
Is is Mr. Volsey, is he on?
Here.
Mr. Volsey?
Franz, unmute yourself. Franz, you're on mute.
Yes, um, I'm on. Do anyone hear me?
First of all, you need to go home and stop being at work right now. I see you off. Second of all, um, you know, what are your thoughts in terms of the 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 street area if we were putting ballers, planters, whatever it is from a safety perspective? What what are your thoughts? And what would this kind, thi- this is gonna be an additional expense to the city as well. We have to understand that as well.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Volsey?
Before you start, before you start, I just want to uh speak to Yancy's point about, you know, inconveniencing or uh harming the other businesses uh that aren't restaurants. So the uh the thought there is, you know, most of our uh other businesses aren't open, you know, that that late in the evening. And uh unless things change dramatically, they probably still would not be open at late in the evening. So I I I think it would be less of a conflict than than um than you might be thinking about. So it it that 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 issue might work itself out.
Mr. Volsey?
Uh, just just a general comment. I mean, obviously, safety is paramount for for everyone. Um, the Bergen Street Lot is is by far the best idea I've heard so far in terms of addressing the, you know, the having the space there for outdoor dining as well as addressing the safety concerns. Now, if Palisade Avenue were to be used in terms of seating, et cetera, me, I I just running down Palisade Avenue in my head, the the restaurants seem to be all cluttered together. I think there's 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 nothing really from Anita to Bomb Guard in terms of restaurants. I think those parking spaces could be left. And again, I'm just, I'm just thinking out, um, I'm thinking outside the box myself. If parking spaces would be impacted, it would be from Bomb Guard all the way to uh the Starbucks. It seems to be the cluster of, you know, eateries there along that side of uh that side of Palisade Avenue. Those would be the parking spaces we would be concerned about. Again, um, safety is a concern, so it would have to be clearly barricaded off if that was the the way the council decided to go. Um, whether it be uh, you know, New Jersey barriers, something pretty heavy that, you know, if a vehicle did go out of control, there would be substantial protection. The other thing is just not to have the, you know, the uh, the tables in the street. Let them take all the sidewalks, all the sidewalk up and have the pedestrians, whoever's walking down the street, actually step down to the street and then and then continue that route. Uh, that's one option, so you don't have the tables um out in the street. And in terms of Sophia, that is, that is a tough call. Um, Angle Street is is uh is, you know, very busy. Um, we do have that sidewalk all the way to Bergen Street along Verizon that could potentially be used. Um, not sure if you can close that sidewalk and just let Sophia use it and have people cross uh before that where there is a crosswalk on Angle Street to use the other side if, you know, if if uh the library is not, you know, is not an option. But a- again, now, the Sid, oh, just to piggyback on uh Councilman Hamer's comment, the Sid also um reached out to me regarding um possibly working with them um and getting involved in what they what they plan on doing or their proposal, just to add my input. Um, they are obtaining a a planner, from my understanding, that that seems to be reputable. So, um are there issues? Yes, there are. Are there ways of making it work? Yes, but we just really have to be careful. Dean Street is scary. Not quite sure how you're gonna work that out yet, but that 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 is scary. That's something that really needs to be, to be looked at carefully. But Palisade Avenue, I think, is 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 doable in a in a lot of ways. And I I'll just leave it at that for now. But again, it needs to be studied a little bit longer to make sure that we we hit all the nails and and we don't leave any anything to chance.
Thank you.
Councilman Cobb?
Yes, sir.
There there's one other uh point to to raise, and and that is that uh despite all the efforts and, you know, whatever it is that that gets done, uh, people still have to be willing to to come out.
Right.
And uh participate. So uh you know, if if, you know, if there isn't an appetite for outdoor dining and restaurant dining, then, you know, this is a moot issue.
No, I agree. I think that the thing of it is, and that's only gonna happen if people feel safe. And safety, right? You know, so that that's the big driver. Just because we do this doesn't mean it's gonna draw anybody out. You know, but we have to, the people are gonna look for what's safe, what's safety, what does that mean to people in this environment today? You know, it means a lot to different, it means different to everybody probably. So I I I I agree with you.
I I don't know if Chief Sufferin has anything to add on the concept of closing off all those parking spots on Palisade Avenue with traffic moving.
Well, again, it, you know, obviously, it's gonna pose a impact on the revenue that's generated from from potential meters depending upon the timeframe, uh because if we're going to block off those streets and put Jersey barriers, that means during the daytime, uh, those spaces are going to be unaccessible. Uh, and and we're, you know, uh, as Franz brought out, w- we're talking about uh potentially from Bomb Guards to Starbucks. Uh, and that's just one section. We have, you know, a plethora of restaurants uh throughout Palisade Avenue where we probably end up blocking off just about the entire street, uh, just going from from Chick-fil-A all the way down to William Street uh o- on the north side. And then you have uh uh the the restaurants to go from James Street uh all the way down to to almost the Monument. So, y- you know, and again, um, if people are looking to recoup some of the, you know, the opportunity, that's what we're gonna have to be faced with. And and that's just one side of the street, you know. And then, you know, the other side of the street has, you know, similarly has restaurants that we would have to contend with where if we're going to do for one, I I would assume uh we're gonna do for all, and that's going to take up probably uh eighty eighty to to eighty-five percent of the meters uh and parking spaces on Palisade Avenue.
Councilman Cobb, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
We have any data on how many restaurants would like to open and how many uh non-essential retail establishments want to open as early as the fifteenth?
Mr. Cobb?
Yes.
If if you would allow, um, Carol from the chamber has been polling the restaurants. If you'd allow her to speak.
Yeah, I'll I'll let her speak. Yep.
Okay, you have um three restaurants that do not want to open at this time. One is Father and Sons, which is on Tena Fly Road. The other is Georgia's Seafood, which uh is where Jet Cleaners is. And the other one is Daruma, which is on Dean Street. And as far as the essential retail and non-essential, uh, every one that I know at this point is going to open.
Thank you. Catherine, I'll answer your question.
I have a follow-up. So the implication on the restaurants is that aside from those three, your information is that they all intend to open on the fifteenth?
Yes, I've gone to visit all of them. So, yes, I mean, I have a plan, so when it's time, I can talk about the plan. Okay.
Councilman Hamer?
Uh, ca- uh, Councilwoman Glenn, uh, there's a a list that I'll circulate through uh our our interim city manager, the uh, an informal uh draft report from uh Ms. Rousher. And it uh sort of details who's interested at this time and and who's not.
Thank you. Any other questions? Look, hey, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, sir.
Can can you start to put a framework around this for us so we have something before we get there on Tuesday?
Yes, yep. I can work with Yancy on that because we've been looking at drafts from other municipalities, for example. Yeah.
Yeah, because we can have some framework. I I I think that uh with uh Jim Fedurko said, taking it one step at a time, I think that's the safest way to do it. Um, and each challenge and each restaurant, we have to do it. But I think the most important thing is everybody on this call needs to wa- walk these areas and be familiar with these areas instead of just voting on, let's do it, and you're not, you haven't seen exactly what this looks like. You need to, we need to understand what this is gonna look like potentially so we could have a, you know, a real good conversation on this on Tuesday, because I think it's it's important, to be fair, to everybody on both sides of the table with this, uh, so we could have as much information as possible. And and we can do, we can phase this in as well, I I believe, because if there are situations where we have questions, then we phase it and we continue to put these things on the docket until we're comfortable with 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 uh putting them in place. So um, I I would ask everybody that, you know, take some time out and look at these areas, be thoughtful about this stuff, you know, each and every one, because the biggest thing, though, no matter what we do, is are the customers gonna come out to this? You know, so the, so I think that we just need to do what we can do and but be smart about what we're doing. Does anybody else have a comment, question, before I open it up to the public?
Um, Mr. Cobb, does any of the couns- do any of the council members have any objections to anything that you asked of or any of the policy changes, shifts? Um, does anyone have any objections to changing Bergen Lot into an outdoor dining facility? I I mean.
I have no objection, but I do have a question. Uh, Bergen Lot has a a large dumpster in the s- in the, it's basically in the center. And uh it will have to be removed and and that area is steam cleaned and and the like, uh, because it can get to be a a little bit pungent during the uh warmer days. So so it it, that's a concern. So I just want to make sure that's being fully addressed.
I also have the concern, I I think some of the people that um rent uh space, the yoga space and apartments there, and I think they ha- they have um use of some of those spots. Um, I don't think it's entirely free parking, is it?
No, it's not. It's meter parking, so they don't have.
No, but I mean, I think that some, there are people who park there, um, st- store owners and things like that.
It's permit parking, but we have not issued any permits um since, since pretty much in City Hall. Uh, and, you know, we haven't renewed any permits, issued any permits, so right now it's pretty much a free-for-all. Uh, so it's not like anyone's paid for their spot at this point, and we're taking it away from them. Can always um help them find other places to park. Uh, permit, uh, meter parking also, we still have not enforced that, so you know, it's, we haven't gotten there yet.
I I just have one, one question. Are we, are we referring to Lot E is in Edward on Bergen Street? Or the lot that's on the north side of the street on Bergen Street? Because I believe.
Right behind Blue Moon.
But I I believe that's needed parking, a- as you said, I believe the permit parking is on the north side of the street.
Correct, that's right, that's correct.
I got the two mixed up.
That's the ver- that's the Verizon Lot on the north side.
Right, right behind the.
Right behind, right, right.
And then we, i- if anyone, if no one has any issues, then we can just suspend the metered parking for um for the duration. And and I believe also Carol was um working on making arrangements to. And and I believe also Carol was, um, working on making arrangements to to remove those, um, gigantic dumpsters that are there.
Yes, June tenth, the dumpsters will all be gone and the individual containers will be placed there.
That's gonna be interesting, because where, you think individual containers are gonna be able to hold the volume? We have problems with that, because it's, you know, they put the garbage everywhere. We gotta make sure that they're able, those stores are able to get rid of that garbage, so we don't create another problem by trying to fix another problem, you know?
Charles, let me tell you, about, uh, two years ago, I went to the city manager with the waste management company with the whole plan, and I gave it to Jewel, too. The problem was, it wasn't implemented, but the plan was there and the containers, all of the, um, the businesses approved it, because it's it's the pro-, they had that program about eight years ago.
No, I I understand that. What happened is, in the past, is in the past. I'm talking about, you remove tho- those dumpsters, and then we put containers in there, and those people are still garbage, you know? That that lot is problematic. So I'm just saying, what assurance are we gonna have? We're gonna be clean on a regular basis, that, you know, so if people are gonna be sitting back there eating, I just wanna make sure that it's 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 a healthy situation back there. And then I sitting back there and the raccoons are winking at them and all that kinda stuff, because we haven't cleaned it.
That's a good point, because I spoke to Yancy, and one of the things that I wanted to talk about was looking, the Sid has brought somebody in for litter patrol, but I think there are some things that we could do, working with the Sid, to make that a better place.
Well, then, you know, hopefully, uh, the, uh, Councilman Hamer could have that conversation with the the folks at the Sid, since he's our point person over there, and see if they would be willing to help out on that, or whatever their approach is.
We can help out, but, uh, there's an additional concern, because there are people who live above those those restaurants and stores along Palisade Avenue, and what tends to happen is, uh, their garbage gets, uh, gets mixed in with the, uh, you know, the sidewalk trashcans, and it tends to overflow. So I suspect they were probably using those, uh, the large dumpster in the back as well. So, uh, you know, some notice needs to go out to the landlords and, you know, make accommodations with the people who are living above the restaurants, and and frankly, that's an issue all along Palisade Avenue, you know? You know, from, from, uh, Grand Engel all the way past the monument. So, that that's something we're going to have to deal with as a city, and, you know, it certainly will impact what happens behind.
We need to probably, as as a governing body, come up with something to address that issue.
Correct.
Right away, it's, it's, 'cause if we're gonna do that, that has to be part of it. So we'll have to come up with something to address that, whether we, you know, notice to all the landlords, and that, you know, if we need to take action, we will.
Uh, Mr. Cobb?
Yes.
I believe the chief was trying to also, um, a- address an issue or bring up a point.
Who's that?
The chief.
Oh, chief.
I thought, I thought you had raised your hand before, I'm sorry. I thought you, no, okay, all right.
He's tied from last night. He's probably raising his hand back from last night. So does anybody else on the governing body have any questions before we move forward and let the public ask questions? All right, Yancy, we're gonna let the public answer questions. You could give them your, read them your rules of engagement in terms of how they need to raise their hand.
I think...
So, at the bottom of everybody's screen, there's a reaction button. Click on that, there's a raise hand option, um, so just, um, click on that, and then we will call on you. Are you gonna do?
Reaction.
It's on here.
Mister, it looks like Mr. Johnson's on.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
Okay, I'm on, okay.
You wanna give everybody two minutes, Mr. Cobb?
Two minutes, he's got two minutes. Everybody's got two minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
I think he simply gets three minutes, but anyway. Uh, Gordon Johnson, Maria...
Can't hear you, Gordon. Can you talk a little louder somehow? We, you're you're low, your volume's low.
Okay, okay. How about now?
No.
Still low.
Okay, no?
Go ahead.
Is that better?
It's better, but it's low. Try, try your microphone.
Standby, standby, standby. Okay, right now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, chief. You know, you survived last night, and I'm glad you were there to help, to help me out again. I I'm I'm gonna respectfully, uh, disagree with, uh, Jim Fedurko and also the chief of police regarding, uh, the, uh, ability for food deliveries or for waiters to cross Engel Street and or Dean Street. These are adults, they're not kids who are carrying, uh, who will be carrying, uh, these, uh, these, uh, products over to the area in, uh, Memorial Park, uh, Vect-, sorry, Veterans Park, and also on Hill Street across to the library. Now, if, uh, the mayor and council, uh, and decide that this may be an idea they wanna follow up on, it will require proper signage, um, to warn these, uh, the, uh, the, the drivers of these vehicles that there's, there's a change coming there, it's it's changed now, and this is now an area that will have Washington Street. So a proper signage, and also, I think, uh, council president said, or someone said, maybe even mentioned, oh, no, the the mayor. The mayor said, maybe with a, uh, a, a police officer assigned there, uh, to ensure that, uh, the, uh, the, the product can be carried across the street safely, that may be an idea, too, just an idea I'm there putting out there. And I'm, I'm here to, uh, try to protect, uh, the small owners that are here, we're trying to get back on their feet, and, uh, that is why I have an interest in doing this. Now, uh, the, they mentioned the Bergen Street Lot. It it, that has more, has several dumps, as I remember, it has several dumpsters back there, not just one, has a vertical trash compactor for, I think, for paper, but each business, I believe, has a dumpster behind it, and also a, uh, those grease collecting units they have. So, if you don't mind, sitting next to a dumpster or or grease pit, then, uh, maybe Bergen Street, maybe, uh, Bergen Street Lot has, does nothing for the restaurants on the west side of town, nothing for them at all. So, uh, having, uh, opening that up, there's no purpose for the restaurants on the west side of town, particularly down by the monument area, the Latino section of our city. So just keep that in mind. And if people have to walk two blocks to get their hair done, then I think they'll walk two blocks, uh, to do that, uh, realizing that we're coming back from this very traumatic situation in in, uh, across the world, actually. And, uh, we're helping out our small businesses best we can, particularly the restaurants that we so much depend on. And I'll close with that, I guess, I guess that's my two minutes. Uh, Michael Cohen, I think you had a pretty good idea, maybe, maybe we'll try to piece of your idea with this, and, uh, or the, or the council will, and I'll, I'll close with that. So, uh, thank you for allowing me my, my two minutes, and, um, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Yancy, who's next?
Uh, Peter Jansen's first on the list.
Yep.
I don't know.
Got two minutes. Name?
Pete Jansen, Ridgeland Terrace. Uh, first thing, yeah, if you put the volume down up there. Uh, uh, the regards to Sophia Restaurant in Engel Street, that's at a location where people are waiting at a light at the cross street prior to that, at Palisade Avenue. They're waiting at the light, they get the green light, and they go. There's a lot of fast drivers on that section of highway, it's a thirty-five mile an hour zone. Secondly, Sophia has a history of late-night parking, double parking, triple parking, people all over the street already. It's a ver-, it's probably one of the most dangerous late-night locations in the city. Secondly, using the library for their potential dining area, that's a special consideration just for them, and it's not fair to any of the other restaurants in the city if you were to grant them access to the library, even if you let other restaurants see people there, because proximity-based, it's best for them, and this appears to be a special handling for them. Regarding bollards and other parking and car restraints on major highways in the city, uh, the purpose of a curb is to prevent cars from driving up on the curb. It's, you know, six to eight inches vertical concrete, it prevents cars from driving on the sidewalk. Once you open up the parking spaces, the cars will be free to drive into the parking space where the, where the tables might be. If you're gonna be using bollards, you're looking at hundreds of dollars per bollard plus installation. For a hundred feet, I've estimated a hundred feet of highway or or road, you would have to spend thirty, forty thousand dollars to install bollards. So, uh, you know, if if the financial, you know, numbers make sense for doing it, and we don't even know if any restaurants are gonna be having big crowds to to cover this, that may not make sense. Somebody's gotta look at a financial analysis of what it costs to put the bollards in and the Jersey barriers in. If you were to close streets, then you're talking about egress problems and fire access problems. Fire trucks require access to the street to cover the buildings that are on the street. So something to think about for the different levels of opening the streets that you're talking about. That's all.
Thank you.
I don't know how to sign in.
You have, at the bottom of your screen, Carol?
Yeah.
Scroll over it under reactions?
Yeah.
There's a raise hand thing, you just gotta press on the raise hand, it gives you your turn.
Oh, I guess I see it. Okay.
All right, so you're in queue right now. Um, next is John Arthur. Great. John, there you go.
Hi, am I good?
Yep.
Hi, everyone. Um, just wanna say thank you, I'm glad you're having this conversation. Um, obviously, these are extraordinary circumstances, um, and, you know, we gotta do what we can do to support the community. Um, I have a couple questions, and they are mainly, how long would would so, would a permit in this instance last for? 'Cause let's say hypothetically, a restaurant has a permit, they're using the library property, and then, at some point, we're free to have programming again, but that, but then we're competing with a restaurant for our own, our own usage of 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 that property? So I'm just curious, where would that, where would the cutoff for that be? And how would, is there a mechanism for changing that permit based on when the library actually reopens? I don't know if anybody knows that answer, but...
This is Bill, if I may, council president?
Yes, please.
Uh, again, it, what could be built into the permit is either a specific timeframe that the permit is good for thirty days, sixty days, uh, but in addition to that, it could be built into the permit that it can be, uh, terminated upon ten, fifteen days' notice, um, you know, particularly in lieu of the fact that, you you know, the executive orders, it's like, that's the first thing I do every morning when I wake up, to see what's come out, and it's ever-changing, so that if, or they come out that, for example, you know, opened up operations more for the library, you'd want some flexibility built into the permits, um, so it didn't inhibit the utilization of the library parking lot, for example. So timeframes can be built into the permits, um, in terms of their expiration or the ability to terminate them.
Okay, okay, so thank you. Um, second question, and this is probably a question for Mr. Bailey again, but since the li-, the library, of course, the property is owned by the city of Englewood, but there is a resolution that that designates the board of, library board of trustees, um, kind of as the custodians of that property and for it to be for library use. So, would this need to pass through both the city council and through the library's board of trustees for it to be permitted, Mr. Bailey?
Um, let me take a look at that, Mr. Arthur, but it may have to involve the board of trustees as well, if there's a restriction on the use of it.
Okay.
But let, let me take a look, though, yeah.
I I'd happily, you know, request that it, you know, we have that conversation. I would just wanna know whether, whether we need to. Our, our board meeting, next meeting is the the fifteenth of June, so...
Um, yeah, maybe we can talk tomorrow, if that works.
That's good.
I'll try and look at the documents in the, in the meantime.
Okay. Um, and by the way, our, our staffs were being used at the restaurant today, anyway, so, um, that was, that was nice to see. So thank you all, uh, thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thanks.
Next in line is Sharlina Fields-Hopson. Hopson, you have to unmute yourself.
Yes, hello.
There you go, okay. Yes.
Okay, um, Sharlina Fields-Hopson, Oakland Street. Um, I appreciate the fact that, you know, they're making way for these restaurants, you know, to reopen their business on a smaller scale. I like the status of the flashing stop sign now. I, again, on Monday, took my walk and almost got hit by a car going up Palisade Avenue.
Mr. Valsey?
Yeah, actually, we, we have spoken through the VPW, the person that's gonna be installing it, we're meeting with him tomorrow, so it will be installed, if not over the weekend and next week sometime.
Okay, I, I, could you let me know? I mean, I'm sure someone's got my email address, and I can provide my phone number to whomever. I'd like to see it go up, I really would. I fought very hard for this.
Uh, you can absolutely give me a call, uh, the city engineer's office, and I will let you know.
Thank you very much.
Not a problem.
Yancy, who's next?
Um, Ivan Giray?
Yes, hello. Um, yeah, so I live at twenty-two Engel Street, uh, so I'm basically, uh, right close by to Sophia, and, uh, in back of my building is the parking lot. Uh, the parking lot, not, not only is it a place for, for a lot of the residents to park, but also the delivery people park there. And because it's the back of the house for all those restaurants, you also have very large trucks that have to come in and deliver the supplies to the restaurants. There's not a lot of space there. It, it has a, a huge, um, amount of garbage everywhere inside the perimeter, um, and I can't imagine wanting to go out and sit in a garage where all of the restaurants are putting their gar-, not only their garbage, but you're also seeing the, the supplies coming in and out. So I just can't see that as being an enjoyable experience for people coming out for the first time, which is so important to our restaurants. It would seem much simpler and better as an experience for the residents, and to encourage them to go out and, uh, use our restaurants, if you can find some way, uh, to maybe, and I don't know how it's gonna be done, but but to, uh, create open space on Palisades Avenue, uh, so that tables can be extended out, um, and I don't know the specifics, but, uh, but I'm just telling you from what I see a- as a local resident, and I just wanted to add in about Sophia, um, it, because I'm, I'm pretty much on Engel Street, uh, I live right on Engel Street, so, uh, the traffic there is not accustomed to stopping. I mean, there is no stop sign, there, there, um, are no lights. Uh, putting a stop sign to allow, uh, a waiter to take food across to the other side, uh, is not gonna be easy, because already so many of the drivers are just not accustomed, uh, to slowing down in this area. Uh, so it just, uh, from the perspective as a resident who lives here and sees that the flow of traffic, it doesn't seem like a tenable idea to me. But that, thank you for your, for the time.
Thank you. Yancy, we have anybody else?
Ken, it just says Ken.
Hi, it's Ken Rosenzweig, Booth Avenue in Englewood. Um, yeah, thank you to the council for having this meeting, um, and I guess the one thing I would say is, uh, don't be afraid to try a policy and change it as necessary. You don't have to come up with a perfect solution, and you can do many iterations until you get it right, and I don't think anyone will expect it to be perfect right off the bat. You know, in my own experience in my department in the hospital, sometimes we'd set a policy in the morning and have to change it by the afternoon as the facts on the ground change. So, obviously, safety's a primary concern, but if there's some issues with, um, pedestrian flow or some confusion, you can make some changes and improve it. Um, it doesn't have to be perfect right out the bat. Um, so, I concur with, but, uh, Assemblyman, the mayor, Councilman Cohen were saying, let, you know, let's get something tried here, don't be, uh, don't be afraid to fail, uh, like the Silicon Valley companies say, you know, um, move fast and break things, but obviously wanna keep safety a high priority, but, um, you can make changes pretty quickly as well. But you can make changes pretty quickly as well. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I signed in.
Yeah, your hand got lowered, Carol.
You got what?
Can I speak?
Yancy, you have somebody on.
Hi, can I speak or?
I don't know who that is.
Yeah, he wants to.
Yeah, I didn't see, yeah. No one, her hand wasn't raised, but.
Go ahead.
There you go, raising hand.
Am I on or?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
Hey, well, thank you for hearing me out. This is Eddie, Eddie SuJack from Sophia Restaurant. So a lot of good points raised by a lot of intelligent people there. And we appreciate you guys taking some time out to try to, you know, help the local business, not just myself. But I happen to be friends with all the restaurant owners, I mean, the majority of the restaurant owners in this area and I talk a lot. And so I'm not just speaking for myself, but for all of us. Look, like Councilman Cobb said, he made a very good point that all of these areas, these sections of Englewood are very different. And it's going to take a little bit of, you know, thinking and kind of come up with a plan for each of the sections. So I can't say that you should do this or that for all of Englewood, but you guys are going to have to come up with a plan that's going to be able to somewhat work for some of us. So, I mean, to be able to help, to be able to help any business, you know, today at these times is, you know, really critical, you know. I mean, we have to come up with some sort of a happy medium. I'm not asking for, you know, for you guys to do, you know, everything that we're asking for, but to come up with something that's going to not just help the businesses, but to be able to control this coronavirus too, you know. So, I mean, we're all in this together and we're all really trying to do whatever we can on our end. But we need a little bit of help from you guys too, you know. Councilman, President Councilman Cobb, right, he said, he said, he said, he mentioned earlier about, you know, having some bench, you know, some benches and some tables, you know, and, you know, across the street from, you know, certain areas. And I think that's a fine idea and I think if you guys decide to do that.
I said that?
I'm sorry, Cohen, I'm sorry.
Right.
Cohen, I'm sorry about that. If you guys decide to do that, then it should be, it should be the responsibility of whatever restaurant is going to allow their customers to go there to be able to sanitize those tables, keep a garbage can there, keep it clean and organized, and take liability for it, you know, ensure them, ensure the, you know, the city for that space. Not just to say, hey, anybody can go in there and dine and no one is going to clean it, you know, or nobody's going to take care of it. So, I mean, look, we're willing to take responsibility. I know there's a beautiful atrium, which is not an atrium, there's a patio space that's right across the street from us. And yes, you know, I know there are some dangers approaching the street and, you know, I mean, I get that. But it's a really beautiful space and I'm sure we could set up, if they would allow us, to clean that area up and really maintain it for the short period of time that we need it for. It's a really beautiful space. I mean, it almost feels like you're in Europe to allow us to create some sort of, you know, ambiance and a little bit of space. We don't have a lot of dining room space. You know, we have a small sidewalk. And so, I mean, we would take full responsibility by ensuring whatever you guys would allow us, we would take responsibility for ensuring it, maintaining it. And if you guys would not be happy, you could always revoke it and take it back right away. So it's not a permanent thing. We're not asking for something that's a permanent thing. You could always say, hey, you know what? You can't have it. It's too dangerous and we're not going to allow you to do that. But it's worth talking about. If you guys could at least consider that, we'd really appreciate it. And the other thing that one major thing, and I hope I'm not going on for too long, but we're a valid parking restaurant. So most of our customers, you know, get their cars validated. So being that we're in the time that we're in right now with the coronavirus, you know, our customers are not going to feel comfortable about, you know, pulling up and having someone validate their car. Well, here's a situation, not just for us, but maybe especially for us, because we're a valid, we're a valid assisted restaurant, to allow us to have our customers park their own car and maybe have one of our attendants there telling them where to park and watching the parking lot. That's certainly not going to hurt anyone. The parking lot is, you know, it's empty right now. The library is closed after a certain hour and it would really help us, you know, tremendous deal. And it will also help, you know, control this, the spread of the virus. So again, thank you for hearing me out and whatever you guys can do. There's a lot of intelligent people there and I appreciated, you know, having you guys all speak and share your comments. And so again, thank you and hopefully I'll see you guys at the restaurants, eating on the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Carol was trying to speak but can't figure out the hand thing.
All right, I think I'm not technologically whatever. Anyway, thank you so much, because I'm glad I have the opportunity to speak, because I've heard a lot of comments and very good ones. And I want you to know, for the past three months, I have been working with the state, organizations and the towns to find out what everyone was doing and looking at what we have that would work best for here. And everybody has been very cooperative. Eddie has been one, you know, about what their needs are. And so the Englewood Chamber developed a plan, looking at the whole city. And I've been contacting everyone. One of the things I looked at, so Bartolomeo, so you know, is set in the front of his store on the side. Tapas, I have to get permission from the owner to use the backyard. The room is not doing anything. So there'd be no restaurant on Dean Street that needs to use the park. I looked at the lot E and Charles, you're right, it's a mess. And I've been trying to clean it up for four years. June 10th, waste is coming in, getting rid of the dumpsters, putting the new ones in. And then Wayne, one of the things that I was looking at is talking to, because we all have to work together, the Sid, because I think that's really important. This can be an outdoor garden. It would take a lot of the traffic off Palisade Avenue, because you'd have Starbucks, Red and White Pasta, Blue Moon, Hummus and Bumgarth, all part of it, all right? So that would be covered. And what I've done also is so you know that we're in difficult times and people are willing to work together. And when you look at a place like, it's Greek to me and everybody has to be six feet apart, Foreman Brothers is agreed to give their space. So when you're looking at restaurants, they have the space above them. And you're right, because I had talked to Rocco, I worked with James, I've worked with Walt and I've worked with Yancy, so that when we're looking at the restaurants and also having a look at the businesses in the future, what works. And then I went down to West Palisade Avenue and looked at spaces there to see that they're shared. So this is where I am right now. And I have a few places left, but I really am trying to expand things, like the Tissary, for example. Billy Valentin, his store, said yes. Cassie's, they're going in the plaza right across from the driveway there. So this is the plan that I've been working on and I'd appreciate anybody's input, but I have tried to look at everything, because one of the things that I know, crossing the street, going into a park is an insurance issue. And also, every restaurant has the, they have to have a certificate of liability for what they're doing, so it covers their stores. I think I covered it.
Yancy, anybody else?
I don't see anyone.
Yeah. I had a quick question for Carol.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I missed what you said about Tapas. They don't have to go across.
No. One of the things that I'm looking at is to find the owner of the building, because you've got a very nice walkway and a yard in the back. And there's nobody that uses it, so that would be perfect. And then that would cover everything, because Bartolomeo is covered, the room is not doing everything. So that's where I am with that. Because I've gotten, for example, Benny's, and I think you all know Benny's. They have gotten permission to use Time Key and the Englewood Bagel. They've got a huge space. It's Greek to me, has a huge space. And then it also will cover, when you're talking about going down the streets, that there's a legal amount of space that you have to have and that's all covered. So Gordon, I'm waiting to hear back about Tapas, because it's the owner. And I'm sure they'll probably say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yancy, anybody else?
Just a quick reminder, if anyone would like to speak, at the bottom of your screen, under reactions, just press that. There's a wave hand. Can't figure that out? If you're on video, wave your hand. No one else?
Give it a minute and then we're going to close the public session. Yancy, we're going to close the public session?
Yeah, nobody else?
Nobody else? And?
There's no closed session.
Right. So I'm going to motion, move the motion to adjourn. So moved.
Good night, everyone.
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
All in favor. Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. See you on Friday.
Night.
All right, good night. Good night.